Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting of the Sweetwater City Council to order. Ask Matt McGowan with Trinity Baptist Church to give the invocation this morning and then councilman Pete will lead us in the pledges.
Dear God, we come before you today and we thank you for this day. We thank you for cool weather, thank you for these that have gathered to conduct the city's business. Lord, we ask for your help. We ask that you would give us wisdom. We'd be humble and wise enough to ask for your wisdom. We ask for kingdom come, your will be done, and earth as it is in heaven. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge to our flags.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the E. Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Okay, well now move to item four, which is discuss, consider, and act upon approval of minutes for meeting held on September tenth, September seventeenth, and September twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen.
Move they be approved.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, well now move to item five, calls for public input. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak? Okay. We will now move to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are items that are considered routine and may be passed with one vote. Any councilman or a member of the public may ask that a consent agenda item be moved to the regular agenda for discussion. Do we have any councilman or a member of the public that wishes to move a consent agenda item to the regular agenda? If not, do I have a motion for item six A through six D on the consent agenda?
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we will now move to regular agenda item seven E, which is to approve an ordinance amending chapter six of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Sweetwater entitled Animal and Foul by repealing the current chapter six and adopting a new chapter six entitled Animal and Foul, providing for the enforcement of such ordinance and penalties for violation. Any questions of Chief Frida?
Can I do any, any questions regarding to the ordinance as you've received it through?
Could you just address the biggest general changes, please?
Beg your pardon, sir?
Address the, the biggest changes associated with the amended ordinance?
Yes, sir. Everything has been gone through, was redlined and stricken, and there was some discussion back and forth on some parts that may not be applicable here in Sweetwater, so that stuff was researched and removed, and so the finished product is what's before you now.
Chief Frida, on six eleven, it says any animal other than dogs and cats and domestic pets found at large within city limits, the owner therefore shall be guilty of a misdemeanor. What, what impact do owners have if their dogs or cats are found at large?
It's a Class C citation to municipal court.
Okay.
A lot of times by the time they are receiving a citation, they have probably been warned numerous times. I think that's put in it lightly. We try to give them every benefit of that because we know that as soon as you find a way to patch a hole or raise the fence, you've got one that endeavors to crawl a little higher or jump a little higher. And so we try to work with, with everybody on that issue, and there just comes a point in time where you have to get their attention.
And this will do away with the city requirement for licensing?
Yes, sir, that has been removed.
And will also prohibit staking of dogs?
Yes, sir, the tethering issue is also addressed in the ordinance.
I move adoption of the ordinance.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
And what we can do, Mayor and Council on this, is, is get the final version of the animal ordinance on the, on the website. And then perhaps if the newspaper can help us push out some of that information so that we can do our best to educate animal owners here in the city. I also want to take the opportunity to thank Chief Frida and Donald on, on this issue and your staffs. It was a lot of back and forth, a lot of thoughtfulness that was put into, into what you see here today and what was voted on and approved this morning. So we'd like to thank you all for that, for that hard work these many months in, in getting us to this point. So thank you all both.
Thank you. Okay, I'll now read the ordinance into the record. An ordinance amending chapter six of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Sweetwater, Texas, entitled Animal and Foul by repealing the current chapter six and adopting a new chapter six entitled Animal and Foul, providing for the enforcement of such ordinance and penalties for violation. We'll now move to item seven F, which is to enter into public hearing and hear a presentation from Danny Schelling, Director of Planning and Development Services, on declaring structures of described properties within the City of Sweetwater to be dilapidated and deteriorated and unfit for human habitation so that as to require repair, rehabilitation, and demolition, providing a time for which to rehabilitate, repair, or demolish such structures and provide for the repair, rehabilitation, and demolish and remove. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We got the floor, sir.
Okay. Mayor and Council, before you today is a number of structures that staff has looked at over the last couple of months, actually even goes back before that, because these are structures that we've had on a list. Finally bringing these to your attention, as the city council are asking you to consider a resolution to declare these structures, and I'll go through each one of them, as typically just dangerous structures. Unsafe, unfit for human habitation, and so forth, as you had just read. The, this information is just basically saying we, we have followed through on all our due process. We mailed out notices by certified mail to the property owners. These are all privately owned properties. We had placed a public hearing in the Sweetwater Reporter, per our city code and due process. We are here then asking for your consideration to decide on what to do with these structures. And based on that, we would be looking to notify, let me go back, property owners of what the decision is today. Normally, if you do declare them as dangerous structures, we would still have to re-notify the property owner and let them know what the decision was of this body. And it gives them thirty days in order to, if it's to take it down, to take it down. And if they do not, then we have the ability to do so. We can abate it. We can put a lien on the property, just like we would with any other nuisance abatement. So in your agenda memo, you'll see that we have eight structures that are listed, and these were reviewed based on our Code of Ordinances, chapter seven, Article Six, Substandard Structures, really related to structural standards, utility standards, fire prevention, and health and safety. I'll go through a couple of pictures on each of the structures that we have. This just identifies kind of what we look for. The technical codes must be substantially compliant with electrical, plumbing, all the utilities, weather protection. If you have holes in the roof, you're gonna get water inside and it's gonna do damage on the inside of that structure. Fire protection. Looking inside some of these structures, there, there's just a mess, and it's clearly a fire protection. Structural soundness, and you'll see a lot of that. Clearly, there's some structures with some issues there. And ultimately, it's the health and safety. That's what we have to hang our hat on as we go through this decision process. Is there an issue with public health and safety? I'm gonna go through a number of lists. On your memo, I'm gonna go from the bottom up. So we'll start with, well, we'll start with two, I'm sorry, we'll start with two thousand, two oh six West New Mexico Avenue. This is a mobile home, actually. And a closer look at this, you're gonna see that there's some, it's an unsecured structure. There's some openings in that structure. Does it just take a little bit? Oh. Okay. So this gives you an inside look at what we're looking, I don't know what, hopefully it'll stay there. Just gives you an inside look at what we're looking at on this structure here. We had a fire, and you can see that there's, I can hardly see it on that bottom picture, but there's a hole in the floor. Clearly, there's some structural issues with this structure moving ahead. And I thought I would go through each one of them, and I guess if anybody is here as part of one of these, they could probably get up and speak, I guess, is kind of the process that I've seen happen before. This is thirteen oh six P's. Clearly, this was a fire damage. You can see from the outside, the roof is in bad shape, the structural is in bad shape, the hole inside, the utilities, I think it's been gutted. And there's an accessory building also on this structure, so that's included as part of this. So it's main structure and accessory structure.
This is actually the second or third time this house burned.
Thank you. And what I have listed here, I won't go over the name of the property owner, but it is listed here, but this is really for the main structure and accessory structures. The last fire documented was in twenty sixteen, so there may have been one before that or so, but. Okay. This is three oh three East Alabama, another mobile home. Can't really tell from here, but there's some openings, it's unsecured. And when we go out there, typically we get complaints on these structures, so it necessitates us to go out there and take a look at them. And then we find that they're, they're abandoned, they're vacated, they haven't had water service in a long time is what we look at. This is the inside of three oh three, and again, we go in because it's an unsecured structure. There's questions about, you know, what's going on in the inside. We have the fires, because we wanna make sure what we've assessed it very well going in. But you can see the, the hole in the floor, we've got some other holes, it's just totally unsecured and dilapidated. Four oh six Bowie, the main structure. You can see that there's some structural damage. This is a shot from the front in the left picture, and then from the back. And there's a lot of debris that's been scattered, that has come from the inside of the house. This is clearly a dangerous structure, and anybody who would, it's, it's really an attractive nuisance, unfortunately, and so I think that's why we have it here today. One oh six FK Williams is, if you look closely at the roof structure, it's not weatherproof. There's some structural issues. It's unsecured as well. And that's an inside. You can see that up on the top left, there's a hole in the roof. Clearly, there, it's not weatherproof. And it just continues to get worse, and it's been, it's been vacated, been abandoned. Nineteen oh two Haley, this is a commercial structure. This is out on Haley. Unsecured, roof is in decent shape, but if, take a look at the inside, you clearly got some structural issues, some holes in some areas. That's all open on that left, that picture on the left, and there's a lot of debris on the inside. Now, we have been in contact with this property owner. The intent is that he's gonna take it down in thirty to forty-five days. We still have it before you to consider it. He would have that amount of time anyway to take it down. So we would still have this as part of a resolution to declare it as dangerous. But the intent with the homeowner, with the property owners, that they will take it down themselves. And that's probably. Nine oh seven West Louisiana, another structure. Clearly, it's open, it's unsecured. You can look at the facia and a closer look at the walls, there's holes in the, in the structure. Structurally unsound and not weatherproof. I think this one also has had utilities taken out. What we get, if it's unsecured, the first thing that happens is you take all the copper out of a structure and it's completely wiped out. These are some other pictures. We've got the mattress out there. You can see how open it is in the front, actually. And you can see the roof where there's been some attempt to put on a metal roof, but you can see the hole up on the top. It's in bad shape. Okay, we've got one. Two oh, twelve oh eight Hickory, completely open, roof is in bad shape, no weatherproof. I don't think there's any utilities in here. Completely open, it's very structurally unsound. Here's some other pictures, closer up shots, you can see the damages to the structure. It's just been weathered. Those are the eight structures as part of the next item, the consideration for the resolution. Again, I just want to reiterate that we had, we had sent notices out, had done everything as to our city code. Let them know that there's a hearing here today to consider the structures as dangerous. And I say dangerous, really that's, it's their substandard. And the staff recommendation moving forward is to ask the city council to declare each one of these structures as unsafe for human habitation, dangerous structures.
You said on that last one that David had contacted you and said that he would take it down, the, on Haley, Haley Street?
Yes.
Have any of the others indicated that they would do anything?
No, we have not, I'm not aware. So.
But none of the others listed here have?
Right, none of them listed here except for the one on Haley, and Danny's alluding to one. We actually sent notices out to ten. And we had one that actually took down a structure on West Broadway. It was a little yellow structure, and it's completely been taken down and cleaned up. So we got some activity on that, but no others have come forward with any type of plan moving forward at all on these structures except for the one on Haley.
Dana, what's the impact to the owners of these properties if, if the City of Sweetwater has to demolish them? What, what will happen to?
What happens is, well, if, if they're declared, we'll send out a, a letter to them by certified mail, let them know that the, what the decision was. And we'll give them thirty days. If they do not comply with that, they, the city will go and abate it, just like, just like we do with weeds and grass and debris. We'll go in there and take the structure down and dispose of the rubble, and then we'll place a lien on the property. And whether we get that lien back or not, you know, we'll see, but that's the typical process. So we will actually seek funding, or we'll seek reimbursement for the funds that we put into it.
How's the amount of the lien determined? Is it a set fee or an hourly charge for demolition or?
Well, so we'll probably, on these, we'll look at a contractor, so we'll get bids on them. And then that'll establish what the, the lien will be.
So city staff won't be doing this?
Not these.
This is part of the company we enjoined that identified, helped identify these properties? It seems like we went into a contract with the company. Will they be involved in the?
If, if.
The bidding process?
If these go back for back taxes, because they're privately owned right now, but if, if the taxes aren't paid, they'll revert into trust property. And at that point in time, the community, Texas Communities Foundation Group that you're alluding to would actually try and put it on the market to resell it. And that's if it goes on back taxes. So yes, there may be some, I, I think that, and that's been very successful, by the way. We are getting some of those properties resold, but yes, these could go back on there. They'd be all cleaned off. And probably easier to sell, just be the lot itself. Thank you.
And this is gonna be an ongoing thing, I hope.
Yes. It will be an ongoing thing. There, you know, we have a lot of need out there. We've got a lot of structures that our plan is to bring some to the city council on a monthly basis. Danny's been working very hard, and I, and I, I need to give credit to Danny. We're, he's been working very hard on this program. And he works very closely with that group to identify structures that may be coming up. So he goes and looks at them and says, this is a candidate, you know, for this type of consideration. So I kinda rely on Danny knowing the community, which he does, where these structures are. And, you know, interestingly enough, there's some statistics out on dilapidated or blighting influences. If you're in a neighborhood where you have one lighting structure, it can reduce property values of structures within a hundred and fifty feet by thirty percent. If you have two lighting influences in that same kind of setting, it could reduce your property values to those structures in that hundred and fifty foot radius by fifty percent. And these are stats that really are out there, there's studies that are done. So when you're looking at neighborhoods, and I think we all know it, you're certainly bettering the neighborhoods and removing the blighting influences. And without having a map, these are pretty much located everywhere in the city. So there's one over here, one over here, one back over there. And I think that is really the preferred approach because we're assisting all neighborhoods, citywide. And we're looking at, right now, probably those neighborhoods where we have some really nice structures, but we have just this one that has taken down the neighborhood, and it's a public health and safety issue, so we wanna work on those, to take care of those. At least in the first phases of what we're doing.
Dana, there's, there's forty-five hundred or?
So water accounts here in the City of Sweetwater. We've got eight on this list. Just as a rough estimate for you or Danny, how many of, of these types of structures in similar conditions do you think are out there? Won't hold you to it, but, won't hold you to it, but just as a rough estimate, a percentage? Seventy to a hundred and twenty?
The Central appraisal district has thrown out a figure of, I want to say in excess of a hundred and thirty that they define as less than ten percent habitable. I don't know what that means. I guess you could live in one corner of it, but.
She shot me that list. It's anything under twenty thousand dollars, and it's two hundred and eight properties, I think. And probably, and the problem what we run into, though, a lot of those properties I've seen in some of them are five-year-old back taxes, they're not even working. So if you have somebody living in a fifteen thousand dollar home, give you a neat, but it's really substandard. And that's where the issue, we're gonna come running to, we're gonna have to get all the ones that hunt up, five miles down. And we gotta start trying to figure out how we can help those people or, or, you know. We got about five of these probably, six of them, and just this, then we'll get to the other. We're gonna try to take down, me and Danny is gonna look at the stats, we're gonna try to take down three quarters of a house a week, that's all. We're gonna get ahead of ourselves, that's where our Angela holds, and we'll have contact coming, which we'll, we'll, um, we'll be dealing, so. Hopefully, we take down a house a week is an average. And we have, and like you say, we're gonna try to put four to six, we can turn it every month, uh, see if we can start a bit of road.
We've got enough work to do, so we've got a few out there, so we'll chip away at it pretty well, but to answer your question, yeah. The intent is to continue bringing these before you as a city council.
I have one question if you may. Some of these people bringing in used mobile homes. Some of them use mobile homes. They bring them in, but they don't have the money to finish them up, skirt them. I know there's two right now in my neighborhood that were brought in, set there. And I'll get with you after the meeting, but maybe if we could tighten up a little bit on used mobile homes coming in. There's been some new ones come in that look really nice. They're doing all the skirting and everything. There's been a couple getting there that don't look so nice.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Yeah. That's, those properties are selling because they're back on the market with our Texas Communities Foundation. And so I think we've had ten mobile home permits actually in the last year, which is.
There are no other questions. I move we close the public hearing.
Thank you.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now move to item seven G, which is discuss, consider, and act upon a resolution declaring structures on described property within the City of Sweetwater, Texas, to be dilapidated and deteriorated and unfit for human habitation so as to require repair, rehabilitation, or demolition, providing a time for which the rehabilitate, repair, or demolish such structures and provide for the repair, rehabilitation, or demolition and removal. Is there a motion?
Make a motion. We declare these structures dilapidated.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Now read the resolution into the record. A resolution declaring structures on described properties within the City of Sweetwater, Texas, to be dilapidated and deteriorated and unfit for human habitation so as to require repair, rehabilitation, or, no, demolition, providing a time for which to rehabilitation, repair, or demolition such structures and provide for repair, rehabilitation, or demolition and removal. City managers report.
Yes, sir. Just got a few things to share with, with y'all and the community. We have our Citizens Police Academy that's been going since last Thursday. They will meet tonight at the police station, and every Tuesday and Thursday throughout the rest of the month, their last class is October twenty-ninth. What we're looking for as a good outcome from this is to, is to get some citizens involved and educated on, on what the police go through and the things that they deal with on a, on a very. go through and the things that they deal with on a, on a very elementary type level. We're asking them, the academy participants, to go out on, on police patrols at least one time during this month with, with an officer, a ride-along, as some people call it. We're encouraging them maybe on a Friday or Saturday night, once, once, you know, the, so they can see that, that other side of Sweetwater that a lot of us don't get to see all the time. And it, it really opens your eyes to what, what is out there, the kinds of things that happen when the sun goes down on a, on a Friday or Saturday night, the things that, that people, our cops run into, the types of issues that they have to deal with, especially during those times. A lot of it will be about just police procedure and operating procedures and, and those kinds of things at, at that level. But, but to me, I've, I've done the Citizens Academy in my former city and, and the main thing is the ride-along on a Friday night. That, that opens your eyes big time. And so, there's, there's still maybe a little bit of a chance if anybody here or anybody out in the community wants to get involved in this. There's still several classes left. I think there's still a little bit of room in that academy. Anybody up here on the, on the, on the dais as well, we can arrange for ride-alongs and those kinds of things. So, I just wanted to let you all know, we're looking at a, at a fire academy as well. They like, they like to have fun. It's, it's a lot different than the police academy. They put themselves in harm's way every day in the, in the fire station and the fire department, and we appreciate that. But their, their, their fun is a little bit different than the police officers' fun. I'll say that because I've taken the fire academy as well. And, and so, we're looking for that also. The police academy will go on through the end of this month and then we'll look for session two to come to us in the spring. So, if any of y'all are interested in that, just let me or Chief Frieda know. We'll make that happen. The landfill, I'm glad to say, all the T C Q requirements have been passed and we've got the permit to open up the landfill. It was open on the first of October. And so, we are operational out there at, at this point. We're very glad about that. There's been a lot of people that made that happen. Dana and his staff and Danny working on that, your, your landfill staff, Kelly, and the, the former director as well, got that started, Kirk. And so, so we're glad about that and, and doing our best right now to get people educated about that. Don't go to the, don't go to the current landfill, go to the new landfill. So, we're, we're accepting type four material out there as we speak. Kind somewhat related to that and some, and a lot related to what we were just talking about in passing the resolution on these dilapidated structures is the community cleanup meeting that we'll be having in this room today at five thirty P M. That, that'll be led by Dana and, and Kelly and his staff. What we're looking to do is get interested folks from the community, community members, business owners, you know, parents of kids who are in the school district, just anybody, families who want to come out here and help us brainstorm on how to, how to hold the cleanup. We've done these before, but it's been a little while, is my understanding. We're, we're hoping to hold a, a community-wide cleanup sometime in, in November. And so, the purpose of this meeting, this first meeting, will be to try to set some dates and some parameters and those types of things. Really want city staff to participate in that. We'll be involved in that as much as we can on the cleanup days. And just kind of in an effort to make Sweetwater beautiful is, is what we're, we're doing. And I think this morning, you saw a lot of those themes with this community cleanup meeting that's coming up. The cleanup itself coming up in November, the resolution that Dana brought forward on the dilapidated structures, trying to get those knocked down, the landfill opening. I think everything's kind of coming together for that purpose. And so, we're very grateful to city staff who've been involved and, and of course, the support of the mayor and the council for those great efforts. The new website, I was, we were hoping to have something to present officially today, but it's, it's still going on. We, we ran into a little bit of challenge with, we need to get the red right because we're Sweetwater Mustangs here in Sweetwater. We need to get that red just right. And I think it's just kind of come down to the color scheme. And so, hopefully, very soon, we'll have that new website debuted. But it's not going to be this morning, unfortunately. Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Motion for adjournment?
Make a motion to adjourn? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's go home.